If you're here representing a school or what your position is, I would appreciate it. I'm gonna start with number 27.
Hi, this is Karen Kelson. I am a parent educator at Rutlandtown School and also a parent.
Thank you, Karen. Could you spell your last name for me too, please?
Yep, it's K.E.L.S.O.N.
Karen, Karen, thank you so much. Number 42, if you could unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Abby Etori, teacher at Rutlandtown School.
Abby, thank you, Abby.
You're welcome.
Now, now, number 80. Yeah, I can see number 80, you unmuted yourself, but I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Nope, I can hear you now.
Okay, this is Stephanie Cassinieri.
Stephanie, and I'm sorry, could you spell your last name, please?
Sure, C.A.S.S.I.N.E.R.I.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, let me go up to number 58, just so I don't miss you. Could you unmute yourself and identify yourself? Number, there we go.
Hi, this is Jody Manning.
Thank you, Jody. I'm gonna go to number 95 now.
Hi, this is Catherine Beach, special educator.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Uh, number 96.
Hey there, this is Colby Hestock, fifth grade teacher.
Colby, could you spell your last name, please?
Yep, H.E.S.C.O.C.K.
Candy, new pen. My daughter's pens. Thank you, Colby.
Yep.
Okay. Number 51, could you unmute yourself, please?
This is, this is Marisa Keyfaver.
Thank you, Marisa. Check my list here. Number 52, could you please unmute yourself? Well, I can see you're unmuted, Ms. 52, I can't hear you. Well, now you're muted.
This is Emily Quigley, third grade teacher.
Great, thank you, Emily. Okay. Look at my numbers. Lynn, I think I have everyone. I actually can't see all of the board members and guests. If you could tell me who they are, that would be great.
We have all of the board here except Matthew. He will not be attending tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Wanna move down so you're closer to the mic?
I can, I can move the camera around to, you know, ask people to watch, whatnot. Are you saying?
Lynn, are Sarah and Debbie both there?
They are.
Yes, they are.
Great, thank you. And this is Tina's first meeting.
Yeah.
Um, there's some people behind me, Shawna, too.
Oh, okay, thank you.
These four.
Okay, can they each identify themselves for me?
Mike, you wanna start?
I have a microphone.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Marcia Turner.
Thank you.
Jill Serrata. And Katie Brady.
And I'm sorry, was that Katie Brady?
Yes.
Thank you.
You wanna try to speak up a little bit? Shawna's having a little bit of problem hearing us with these mic.
Thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome. You all set to go?
I think we're good to go.
Okay, let's open the meeting.
Disappear.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tina, welcome.
Thank you.
All excited?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Louis wasn't on the list. Is he gonna pop in?
Louis should be on the call, yes.
Louis is on the call.
He is, okay. That's gonna say, how can we do the budget without Louis? Okay, we're gonna start with approval of the agenda, additions, deletions, changes. And I do wanna make one addition. Um, Mike is here early. But, um, we'll, we'll have, we'll add him in if we could do that. Um. You wanna be before or after the finance discussion, Mike?
That's up to you. That's your call.
We're gonna do it before. We'll add that to the agenda. Any other changes to the agenda, any bits, can see? Do I have a motion for approval?
I'm with the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Tim, second. Ross, all in favor? Any opposed? Teacher, staff, community, community questions? Anything else, maybe?
I have a couple of updates. If you'd like to listen, I'll be quick as, as much as I can.
Go ahead.
I guess I'll stand and I'll project my voice. So I'm Marcia Turner. I'm a sixth grade teacher, social studies, language arts. And I just wanted to tell the board about a few things that's happening in middle school. So this week is student conferences, or as we do in middle school, we do student-led conferences. So the students really take the time and effort and spend a lot of time creating a slideshow, um, looking over all their classes and getting work samples and reflecting on their work, thinking about what they're doing really well, what is something that they need to really be working on, setting some goals, and then they present that to their parents. And so, um, this year, five and six really worked together to create a slideshow and then send it in a slideshow as well, but a little bit different for age appropriateness. Um, so we're excited that that's happening this year. Student-led conferences have been happening for a few years. I don't know how many, but, um, uh, we really enjoy it. And then Friday is a half day, as everyone knows, and so to celebrate all the hard work, um, in the past, we've done, we call it TA Day, but we can't mix TAs. So, um, I'm calling it Grade Day this year. Um, so fifth grade and sixth grade separately are creating activities for those students during the day. So we have some outside activities to participate in. We have some inside, uh, activities for the kids to, to work on for team building and just for fun, fun activities separately, so, um, and that kinda leads us into sixth grade specifically. Um, my counterpart, Bailey Sanders, um, and I, um, started last year doing team building with our sixth graders, and so we continue this year. We found a time, so every other week, about 40 minutes in a day, we actually spend team building with our sixth graders. So building on cooperation skills and communication, um, relationship building amongst themselves and with us. And so we follow the guidelines, mask wearing, social distancing, all those pieces when we're outside, but, um, the kids really seem to look forward to it every other week to just really go out there and just, um, sometimes it's just playing a silly fun game and sometimes it's really pointed activities to really build those skills, which we feel that they're valuable because you have to communicate, you have to cooperate in this world. So we hope we do a little bit of that part. Um, and the last thing is, is, um, sixth grade, just last week, I think it was, we had a Q and A with, um, it was called Q and A with teachers. Um, so we held a group meeting with our sixth grade parents and did a slideshow with just some questions and answers, things that pertain to sixth grade, things they're having, jump rope assessments, um, team building, uh, our particular areas, so social studies, um, language arts, and then science and math. And then, um, unfortunately, not all parents could come, so Ms. Sanders and I stayed on Friday and we recorded ourselves, um, doing the slideshow again. Um, and then we sent that out through class tag to our parents and emailed to the parents that weren't able to come, so that all the parents could actually get to take according to the same message. Um, and then internally you could email questions. So those are just four things that kinda are coming out this week and happened last week, too.
Awesome, thank you. Any other questions, comments, updates? Okay, we'll move on to Mike. He requested to come before us.
Hi, thank you.
The only time you come is when you want money, but go ahead.
I don't want any money. Right, yes, I do, what am I talking about? So to follow on with, um, Marcia, 7-8 is doing a, we usually do a service learning where we, um, find some families in the Rutlandtown area that are needy during the holidays. And we usually go downtown and we shop for them, kids chip in money, and then we send them off to the people that knew who gets them. So this year, we're doing a 7-8. We're continuing with that, except we're gonna do online shopping and then wrap them and then distribute them to the needy. So that is happening with 7-8 this year. We're not stopping what we've done in the past. We're just making it bigger and making it work for, um, our grade 7-8. So I have, as far as coming to you, I'm coming to you athletically, just so you know, the fall went really well, I thought. Um, so now we're able to play basketball. So basketball is slated to schedule the 30th, which is Monday after Thanksgiving. So we're having our coaches meeting this week, and we will start practicing right, uh, on the 30th. We're allowed to play games potentially on the 11th of January. We'll see where that all goes. But just so you know, that's where we're moving forward with practices. Um, I'd be in touch with Kelly T., our maintenance, making sure that everything is cleaned and, and all that is what it needs to be. So that's happening just, you know. The second thing-
How, how does that work? Because I've been told that it's just the kids.
Yes, so that's my next part. So you're, as of right now, you're not allowed to have spectators. So that means there is a little bit of a quack line. Do they stay in the parking lot and let the car run? Do they dump and run? How is it all gonna look? They're gonna be able to stay after school if it's a home game, per se, and I can monitor them so that they don't have to leave. So that's not a problem in that regard. Traveling, they'll have to travel, um, with their parents, just like they normally do. So that brings me to my second part, is that we would like to somehow simulcast our activities in the gym so parents can watch them, grandparents, all the people that come to watch the games. So I gathered some information and talking with a company called Huddle, which other schools in our district are using. It's a great tool for high school because it follows, it tracks the action, it's a great view. But for high school kids, it's great because you can record yourself, break down stats, send it out to colleges. So it's wonderful. So I'm looking for something similar that we can use in our building, not only for sports, but also if we were to do events that we could record in the gym or whatever, and we can livestream it to parents. So it's not sports specific, though it is Huddle, that's their company. The drawback is that it's expensive. It's, if you just wanna rent the camera, but I use the word rent because you don't own anything once you join, once you purchase their packages, which I have sent off to the principals and to Greg to look at for ideas. So it's $3,000 for the camera for a year rental. We can, Joe at West Rutland has been gracious enough to put us under his umbrella so that we don't have to pay the extra fees to actually videotape the games. Their overall package is an $8,000 package for two years. That's quite extensive. That would, for us, using all of the, the pieces that come with it. A high school, I could say yes. A middle school, I have a little hard time with $8,000 for that. However, if there's an alternative that we could come up with, that we could livestream somehow, that would be great, because then we can send it off to parents, grandparents, wherever in the country. They just log in just like this meeting and can watch their kids play.
Oh, that's awesome. Well, it wouldn't be 8,000, it's 4,000 a year.
Well, they have a, they have a two-year package, and then they have a single package. So if you just wanted to buy the standalone camera, and I use the word buy, because you're not buying it.
Right.
You give it back.
Right.
And that's my, that's where I have a little bit of a wallet cringe, and I'm like, wow, that's a lot of money. But it, it's literally like it follows the game.
Right.
Um, and it's very easy. It's a plug-and-play, as Greg was telling me, plug-and-play in a lot of our other districts, because I don't know, I think everybody in the district essentially is going in that direction. Uh, Corey Valley, all three schools are looking into that as well, so, yeah. So us being our kind of middle school, I'm just kinda looking for ideas, what you would like with that, if you wanna go in that direction.
Personally, this past year, we've been shut out of so many things. The kids have been shut out of so many things. Um, I think while $3,000 is a lot of money, um, to be able to have the enjoyment of them being able to watch the games, and I assume, I don't know how you do this, but I would assume you could do other sports with it also. Um, I don't know how you're gonna choose when you got two teams going at the same time, but, um, I, I don't know. You guys, what do you think? Tim?
Let me, let me throw, before you go back. You can, it's also affordable, so we can set up outside. We never have two games going essentially simultaneously, cause lacrosse and softball, unless it was a baseball game in that night. We can kinda play it around that. So we can still use it for those sports as well. But I'm assuming it's gonna be like the fall, they're gonna allow spectators in an outdoor environment, potentially. I, that would just be my gut, is that you're outside, okay, we can be like the fall. It's the inside part. Now, that could also, wearing the other hat as your rec director, I have all those kids from K to six that could benefit from this as well. So maybe there is a way to work together. I could ask that guy and he could tell me if he wants to do it, and we can figure it out. Just a conversation with myself. So we could potentially do that, unless there's some funds that are available for school for this, then great. Um, those are kind of what you need to know as far as that part. So, sorry, just to inform you, that it can be used for multiple things.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, I mean, I'm not opposed to, not opposed to, uh, definitely, I, I feel like the one year is probably, um, probably the direction to go, that we can explore and see how, you know, how that seems to function for what we need and then also what, how it balances out with some other opportunities that we may have, um, have with it versus on a two-year, you know, at this particular juncture. Uh, what's the turn, I mean, is this, is this a decision for tonight?
No, he said the lead time is about three to four weeks, once you agree until the camera arrives, and then it's basically plug-and-play, right, right? And we are in the gym right now, we currently are all wired and everything, so literally it's just mount and play. I was talking to Kelly, we had designated a spot that's already hooked up, and we're all ready to go, just about at the height where they would want. So there's very little extra cost, like an electrician coming in and mounting. So we, we have that kind of already there in that regard.
I regret saying plug-and-play because we don't actually know exactly what's gonna be required, but-
Right.
From just a specification standpoint, it's very doable to set it up in a short period of time.
But the lead time's about three to four. Uh, we don't technically, we'll start until January 11th, and that gives us plenty of time to have this going.
Well, we don't meet again until December, so that would be cutting it a little close, but, um, we can discuss it later. Ross?
I like the idea. I think it's smart. Kids, people always wanna see their kids play or their grandkids play, and it's, uh, it's disappointing if you can't go, can't go watch. Is there, um, is there any other platforms that we've looked into, or is this just kinda what all the schools are using, so it just makes sense to kinda gravitate towards that?
That's what I know of as far as, this is kinda the only platform, and that was my other question when I set up, you know, is there another alternative, like can we buy a camera? That, that's how I came, you know, that was my, I'm just throwing it out there, if that's possible, so we can research that rather than being a program, I'm just trying to look around.
If you know Eric Mallett, he's, uh, heads up at Paramount Theater, you know, if you want, I can get you in touch with him. He might be somebody that would be a good contact, and then the other person that comes to mind is Amanda Wheeler.
I know Amanda.
Yep, I'll be able to. And might be another, another avenue as well to explore. I don't wanna just create a bunch of worst for you.
No, that's okay. I wanna be able to provide the service. I know this is right there, and the district's using it, and not using, but it, it's fairly simple, so it's just pricey. And granted, hopefully it's a one-year for us-
Right.
For high school, it's wonderful. Like I said, you're videotaping possible in college, and you can send out a coaching, so that's a huge bonus, um, for the upper level. But we're middle school. We just wanna be able to promote that people are watching.
I'd be happy to put you in touch with Eric.
Sure, please, that'd be great. So I just send you some, I'll call.
Tina?
Was it 3,000 to rent and then plus a package?
The, they sell a two-year package, $8,000, 4,000 a year. And that gives you everything. Or you can rent the cam, or you get the camera, which you would get in that package anyway, for three grand. And then you can spend 900 just to get a small package for, say, basketball. Or West Rutland has agreed to include us in their umbrella, so we don't have to pay the extra fees. We just pay for the camera. And then it's just playing nice with West Rutland. If Proctor gets it, we can play nice with Proctor and then go from there.
So it would just be 3,000?
Potentially, yes.
Is that what you're thinking?
Yep.
And then it would only be the home games?
Yeah, it's, it's, he's running the gym, yep.
And you think you could use it for the K through, or the three or six?
For rec, yes, because it would just be a matter of me, because I do that anyway, so I would just hit the buttons and send out the links to that part.
I think it's a great idea. And when our kids play West Rutland and Proctor and Holt, they would have access to it through their-
Right, so they get, like, we get access, exactly. So when we go play West Rutland, you can watch it, and West Rutland can watch us, because we're playing each other in the, within the district, so those schools have you play. So there's a bonus for there, you get an extra game.
I think it's great. Thank you for looking into that.
Well, it's just a way of, you know, making sure people can watch it. And then my last thing I have is, I would just, I know it's budget time, I would just ask that you consider making all of our coaches, I know our cross-country coach is at a lesser fee than all, every single other coach, I would just ask that you include that coach, just like every other coach. They put in the time and they deserve the stipends, but that's a few. All of our coaches make $1,000 now, except the cross-country, which is 500. So I'm just asking you, that's up to you. I'm just asking, I know it's budget building time, if you would just consider that. I, I just think it's fair as being a middle school coach, um, but there's no discrepancy in that regard. If you win everybody but that, that's just my, my concern for that. So if you would just take that into consideration in your building. Other than that, do you have any questions for me? Just even of Eric.
Okay.
Rob, you, right? Thank you.
One question.
Yeah.
Okay, I noticed on our wish list, tell us about the scoreboard.
The scoreboard, since we now successfully transferred our back with soccer, which means the cross will be there and softball will be there, my vision is, do you have a scoreboard out on the wall, the back part of the school? That's a vision. I know times are what they are. Um, I know they're anywhere between 5,000 to 8,000 dollars to get a very decent one that's just mounted and then, uh, a portable score so that people can see the score. We have our little tiny one that's not waterproof, that if it's nice, they can bring it, if it's not, it stays inside.
Right.
So that's kind of like, now that we're, we're kinda here with all of our sports, it would be a really, there's a spot there, there's power there, or not, and very close to it. So it's, that's what I'm hoping for, to kinda move forward and purchase one of those eventually.
You know I'm pro the scoreboard, because I don't know if any of you, when you're out there watching the games, and you're trying to keep track, and you try to look at this little scoreboard, and you've got 14 people in front of it, and you can't see it. So, yeah, it would be nice, but I have gotta agree on that one. Anything else you're looking for, or we're gonna get surprised with?
Surprised with? No, I don't think you'll get surprised with anything that I know of.
Oh, that's right.
That's what Kelly and I, well, Kelly, his credit, has come in and asked for a wishlist of what we might like to do for the gym to upgrade. Um, so we have talked about replacing the bleachers, redoing the floor, like a sand of the floor and new lines, because it's, I don't know, what did we put it in, 15 years ago?
Something like that.
Something like that. And it's worn very well, but it's starting to get to that point that you have to make that decision. So that's part of this proposition. The other part is getting the curtain, which now is a pull across, which is literally pull your arm out to get it across, to retrofit it, so it scrolls up. That's another wishlist. And then a sound system within the gym so that you can use it for any event, so that you can hear something set around it, so it's very clear throughout the building. So that's kinda been on Kelly's wishlist that he's going for, that we have had discussions with.
So the bleachers are indoor, in the gym, not-
Yes, they're indoor, the replacement bleachers that we have in the gym. But that's kind of on the wishlist.
That would've been a surprise.
But, well, he would've brought that two-year in.
Well, I know, but as soon as you brought it up, I'd say, ah, should I ask Mike?
Yeah, that's, that's Kelly and I getting together with our wish, 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 wish list over the years. So that's kinda what we foresee. I, I love the fact that we're moving forward with that. Uh, the rank update, if you don't know, I can tell you that we purchased the rank, a portable rank that we will be installing. I think it's coming this week or next week, and then a bunch of us said that we would help Kelly install it so that we don't lose water and it works perfectly, and we can expand it if we want to, if we need a bigger surface area. So hats off to Corinne, because she did a whole bunch of work, left that money, and I think we have no money left. But we're gonna get everything that we possibly want.
Exactly.
So that is going forward as well. And we have had discussion, having the rec department, if it goes really, really well, I have sources to pay people to man building if we want to even go that far. Well, I have lifeguards that I still have salaries that I can go forward and use in that regard. So there's, there's some options there, too. I'm kinda thinking if I was surprised with that, maybe.
Anyone have any questions for Mike?
I don't, I don't wanna get yelled at, because I didn't simply, I think that's kinda it.
Never, we have never yelled at you.
No, I haven't. I'm just, I'm just, are there any questions? Me, feel free, please, at any time, you can call me if you have a question. Do not hesitate, I live three minutes away.
If I can just make one suggestion?
Yes.
When it comes to like these wish lists and things like that, like I would love if I saw like at least like two choices and the benefits of what that would be. So, like, so if the bleachers are like 28,000, or we can get these for 14, you know, but this is what you, you know, this, these are the risks you take, you know, or like to the point of the camera, you know, like, this is 3,000, these are the benefits to it. I can get you one for 1,200. You know, I'm not opposed to, I see the benefits and, you know, better things, you know, like I'm not afraid of the money option, so long as I understand how it quantifies in the, in the full spectrum of it. So that would be my only suggestion that would help me make a more educated and comfortable decision on, you know, any others, whether it's software or, you know, uh, products or whatever it is.
Well, it's like any budget process you, or spending process, you want more than one piece, and I'm sure they may-
I'm sure they'll have it.
Back to, to Kelly to make sure he has multiple, which I'm sure he will anyway. Uh, but yes, I agree with you 100%. And that's why I brought that tonight as far as the camera, and knowing that Craig has some expertise, maybe he, he's got a better idea, and that's, that's the only reason I brought that up and threw Greg under the boss like that.
Well, that's okay. I looked at him already. I didn't get any indication back, but-
There's very few all-in-one packages other than them. You can buy tracking cameras and configure it to go to live streams like YouTube, and that's what a lot, and that's what a lot of college level do, or they buy a complete program like this and have it professionally installed in an auditorium. And then it's just, you push the button, you're broadcasting, you know, and it's done. It's very common, and they're one of the best, the one that he's selecting. Um, they're fairly new as a company. They've only been around, they've been around for about 10 years, but with this product, only about a year and a half. It's very common and they're one of the best, the one that he's selecting. They're fairly new as a company. They've only been around, they've been around for about 10 years, but with this product, only about a year and a half. But it's really solid and everybody likes it and they're gaining a lot of market share.
Awesome. Any other questions for Mike? Thank you. Have a good night. Louis, you there?
I am.
Let's go to finance.
Okay. So the budget was in the packet. There is seven pages to the budget. The first page is just a summary of all the changes that are included in the budget. And then the next few pages are the detailed, details of the budget. And then the last page are the SU bill backs.
Okay.
So I can walk you through some of the changes that are in here and we can look at the bottom line. So right now, we're being told by Visbit to expect approximately a 10% increase in health insurance premiums. So that is included in the budget with the cost of approximately $56,000. Looking at some.
Do you know what last year's increase on the health insurance was?
Wasn't it 12?
It was 12.9%, I believe it was, or 12.8.
Yep, high.
Yeah. So we're moving in the right direction, but it's still pretty high. And some increases in tuition reimbursement for teachers, approximately $10,000. We were underfunded compared to what actuals we were seeing. Increases in transportation costs, and this is due to two reasons. One, as you may remember, we went out to bid two years ago for a new contract. And that contract did come in significantly higher. Our prices were low. It had been a while since we had rebid it. So we were seeing a large increase due to that. Plus, we receive approximately 45% back in revenue for any dollar that we spend for transportation cost. But there's a two-year lag for that. So for the revenue that we receive in FY '22, it's based on FY '20 expense. And our FY '20 expense was lower than normal because we didn't transport students from March to June due to COVID. So we received labor credits, we received mileage credits, and we received just a general transportation credits. So that lowered our cost. We saw that reflected in the surplus that we had. And so since we had a lower cost in FY '20 and our revenue for FY '22 is based on that, we're seeing less revenue come in, which is increasing our net cost. So that's about a $48,000 increase for FY '22. SU assessments are in. For those of you that were at the SU meeting, or for those of you that weren't at the SU meeting, both the general fund and special ed were both down. However, the assessments are based on each district's percentage of the whole SU. Based, and for the general fund, it's based on ADM. And for special ed, it's based on child count. So for Rutland Town, your IEP students increased more than the other districts in relation to the whole SU. So even though everybody else was, even though the SU special ed budget was down, everybody else was, is seeing a decrease in expenses. Rutland Town is actually seeing an increase in expense of about $34,000. And so that's, the short answer is that's due to an increase in special ed students at Rutland Town specifically.
Louis, if I could, do you remember, I'm trying to remember from the Gerkso meeting, the number of actual student increase at the time we did it?
Yep, I have those numbers here. So for special ed, we went from 282 students to 314 students. That's the whole SU. Rutland Town went from 63 students to 77 students.
Great.
So their percentage of the allocation went from 22.3% to 24.5%. So you're paying an extra 2.2% approximately of the special ed assessment.
Okay. Wait, I just wanted the other board members, if they hadn't, if you didn't know that. I just wanted to show them that some of the other districts are declining or staying the same. We're building. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, and just quickly, I could tell you, so for those people that were not, those board members that were not at the SU meeting, the general fund total expense was down by 15,000. Actually, I'm sorry, that's the second draft. For the first draft, that was, the budget that's in here is based on the second draft, which hasn't gone through the board yet. But right now, the general fund is down about 15,000 in a general fund. And special ed is down by about $90,000. So we are reducing the budget at central office. Unfortunately, it doesn't affect each district the same way. Tuition expenses are still pending. I'll have an update for you at the next board meeting on those. We're still collecting a lot of the data from the schools to make sure that we have all of the students. Increase in special ed disallow. So at the SU board meeting, we talked about this as well. Just to be more conservative with our estimates, we have increased the amount of disallow time for para educators. We went from 15% to 17.5% just based on the actuals that we were seeing from the prior years. Paras as a whole in the SU were spending more time doing general ed activities. And the general ed activities are disallowable under special ed law. So we needed to increase that percentage so that we were more prepared for that in the budget.
Okay.
And that was about a $12,000 increase. The FY '20 surplus is included in here as a revenue. That you can find that on page two. So our surplus that we ended last year with was $186,000. So that is on, at the top of page two. That's an increase of $101,000 over the prior year's surplus. So that goes in as a revenue. So automatically, before we even start looking at expenses, we're seeing a $100,000 benefit because of that surplus. And that'll help bring down our education spending. The thing to agree with that is that that's a one-year, that's a one-year bump. So when we look at FY '23 next year, when we start budgeting, if we don't have a surplus this year that matches that, anything that's left, that'll be a decrease in revenue. So it's always good to keep that in mind because you may see a one-timing decrease in tax rates or decrease in education spending, but it is just a one-time. The next year, you have to make up for that.
Right, if I'm not mistaken, last year, we really thought we'd be in trouble. This year, because we put so much into cash to open. Now, what is that 101 from, you know?
The 101,000, that's the difference between the FY '19 surplus and the FY '20 surplus. So FY '19, there's a two-year lag on when we used that. So FY '19, we ended with a surplus of $85,000. And that went into FY '21's budget as revenue. FY '20, which is the year we just closed, we ended with a $186,000 surplus. So that'll go into FY '22. So the difference is the $101,000 from one year to the next. So we had some, just some changes in custodial due to our recent retirement. We had one custodian retired and we had two part-time employees that we've increased to full-time. And then there were some increases based on principal feedback in direct instruction software for programs like Dreambox, Lexia, and some curriculum software. And then some equipment and supplies for chairs, desks, scoreboard, cubbies, playground, soft playground, equipment, wood chips, and some other maintenance repairs and maintenance area.
Now Louis, the increase to pre-K playground, because I know we have that on our list of things we needed to do. Is that just fixing what we have or has that got anything new in it?
It's got a couple of new things in it, plus wood chips.
Okay, so this is the issue that we wanted to address that's automatically in there?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay.
And then the last, the last item that's a major change is just, this is FY '22 will be the first year that we start payments on our new bond, which was the $235,000 that we took out for the safety improvements. So that's a $23,000 cost for those bond payments. That's a 10-year bond, $23,000 per year. And then the other, at the bottom is the items to consider. I think you already talked about some of those earlier, about the bleachers, utility shed, refinished in floor. These are things that we'll look at, maybe either tonight or future meetings based on where the budget's coming in and where you want to see the budget and how it's affecting tax rate. If there's enough room to put these in, then the board can decide to do that. Otherwise, we can save them on the list for a future year.
Are there any highlights you want to give us throughout the budget or is that it?
Those are, those are the main, those are the main highlights. I mean, page two through page six are the details of every line. There are special attachments that I received from the principals. I'm not sure if those were shared directly by the principals, which include the increases that they have requested, like Dreambox and Lexia. Those are all included. Any staffing changes, whether it be staff or their benefits, those are all included in here. The major thing that I mentioned earlier that's outstanding really is tuition. And we'll see how that's affecting us at the next board meeting.
Did you put any increase into the budget for that or no? You didn't guess at it at all?
Currently, there's a small increase, there is an increase built in here for $118,000, but that's just an estimate at this point. So if you go to page six, this is the last page of the Rutland Town budget. You have the total expense is up by $175,000, which is approximately 2%. Education spending is, which is the amount we have to raise in property taxes, is up by 80,000, which is less than 1%.
Awesome job, guys. Okay. That's awesome. Does anybody have any questions for Louis? This is our first draft. I'm going to go into it in more detail later, but any question? I'm really proud of the numbers. How does the state look? Are we going to get hit or not?
We don't have a lot of information right now. The first estimates will come out on December 1st from the tax commissioner when he gives his recommendation on the yield. At this point, we're being told that they don't expect the deficit. The deficit has, the state-level deficit has been decreasing over the last few months, or their estimate of the state deficit. It was, the last time I had heard, it was down to $67 million. But at this time, we're being told that they don't anticipate that deficit affecting FY '22. The legislators did tell the tax commissioner not to reflect that deficit in his recommendation. They're still looking at ways to mitigate that deficit, either using a CRF, federal CRF money, or potentially a long-term loan that would spread that deficit over years. So that may change as we move further into budget season. But at this time, the guidance that we have is that it won't affect FY '22.
Good, good. Okay, did you have anything on the current year's budget? That we got anything we need to be aware of?
Not at this time. I will have a forecast for you at a future meeting, hopefully at the next meeting.
Okay, now typically, I think it's this time of the year, we take the 25,000 out of the surplus and put it towards our technology fund. Is that built in or no?
No, that has not been done since the merger, since the merger of GRCSU.
Okay. Because typically, I know in the past, we've done it so that we don't have to scramble for funds. Is it your recommendation we don't need it or we should continue with it for Rutland Town?
I mean, if you were going to put money away, I would recommend you put it into a capital maintenance fund rather than technology. I think capital maintenance is where you would see larger expenses. Technology expenses you can spread over time, especially with the current technology plans where they have a rotation of Chromebooks and other technology materials. We have been able to get a lot of technology equipment out of the federal CRF dollars. So I don't see a great need in that area over the next few years. I don't think that's, I don't, wouldn't think that's a very beneficial place to put money at this time. I mean, if you were looking to maybe store away some of your surplus so you didn't have such a large amount of revenue going into one year, I would recommend you put it into a capital maintenance fund. This way, for building repairs, I mean, those can, if you look at replacing a roof or some other large expense, that'll allow you to do a larger project all at once. Currently, you do have a large amount of money in the capital maintenance fund due to the sale of Cheney Hill.
Right.
The one thing also I would recommend if you, if you wanted to consider it for the ballot is maybe giving you more flexibility with that capital maintenance fund. It's my understanding is the only way you could spend that capital maintenance fund is with voter approval.
Correct.
Many times when capital maintenance funds are created, the board has the authority to spend those without voter approval. It really, it really complicates it when you're looking to get voter approval to put money in the capital maintenance fund and then you have to get voter approval again to spend it. So, I mean, if you really need a roof replaced, you don't want to have to wait until next March when you have to go out for voter approval to get that approval to replace a roof. And then what if they, what if they voted down, then you can't replace the roof. So I think it's, it would be important to get more flexibility with how you spend that money and asking the voters to change that.
Right, we could do that. Now, you said Cheney Hill. Now, we have to get voter approval to put that into the capital fund, correct? I think, do we need a vote to take it out? We need to put it in?
No, I think that, the voter approval to put it in, I believe, was already done when we put it on the market.
Okay, I'll have to, we'll have to make, we'll just verify that to be sure. Because I know typically, we can't touch that fund either putting in or taking out without voter approval. But we've got time down the road to look at that.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure I looked at it back when we received that check, but I will take another look.
Okay. Yep, okay, because I can't remember the exact wording on it now, but, okay, thank you. Anybody got questions for Louis on what we've been presented so far? Okay, Louis, anything else?
I would like to have a brief executive session at the end of the meeting just to go over some personnel-related issues regarding the budget.
Okay, thanks. That was a long 10 minutes, huh? Director's orders, you did get those, should have gotten those in your email on the warrants. Do I have a motion to approve the warrants?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ross. Thank you, Tim. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes of October 12. Now, you read them all, so you're up to date, right, Ross?
I actually read them when you guys were drawing earlier.
John, thanks. Okay, if I could have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 12.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Dana? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thanks, Lance. I have a few things to discuss while this time of year.
Thanks, Lance. A few things to discuss while this time of year, it's mired in budgets. There are a couple of things for us to just talk about. On October 23rd, the AOE and Department of Health released an updated version of Strong Healthy Start, which we saw at the beginning of the year. We've been reviewing these updates with bill administrators during our weekly meetings, and we have until the 16th to make sure that all the recommendations and requirements are being done in our schools. We're not too daunted by a lot of these, since, you know, aside from our schools, and we were pretty proactive in our approach at the beginning of the year, that some of these changes will be very subtle. The big changes that we're looking for, obviously, is as we move into cold weather, looking to see how things, you know, occur and what may happen. You know, obviously, we look at holiday travel. That is a concern as we move into Thanksgiving week, and then we've, obviously, into the winter holidays. Another question has been asked by me, if we're going to restrict travel. We, as an SU, cannot restrict travel. We just are asking, obviously, staff and families just to be mindful of the restrictions and, you know, look at the updated travel map. If you see the map, it doesn't look good. It's, you know, more and more red all around us, so it's closing in all around the state of Vermont. But we just have to make sure if we do travel to a red or yellow county, that we do quarantine. So, and like I said, I know people have been asking if the state's going to enforce a shutdown or, you know, extended holiday period at this time. We have heard nothing about that, so we're continuing to operate normal, so therefore, we just ask people to make, you know, good, sound decisions about traveling. While we remain on our current schedule, there are a couple of things that, you know, we're going to stay on our current schedule until at least the end of the second quarter, which is January 26th. We have been, like I said, maybe regularly with the union reps, and we have teachers and parents and staff have let us know their thoughts, their feelings about where we're at, and they said, well, we value their, the work they've done. They've done a phenomenal job. We also value their input. And they said that our staff are exhausted. They're tired. They just, you know, on a daily basis, they're stressed, and I think it's stress and anxiety that they've felt. Obviously, we're in a pandemic, so we are currently working with a group of teachers, administrators, and we're looking at what the second half of the year may potentially look like. When we put together this plan at the beginning of the year, we did say that this plan was one to kind of, you know, get us into the beginning of the year, but it also looked to be revisited and just, you know, check on. So that's what we're doing right now, is going to take a look at what the model might look like over, you know, the course of the second half of the year. But like I said, I just wanted to let everyone know that while we're looking through that, reviewing that, our current model will stay in place until the 26th. There are concerns about staffing, because we look at, you know, last year, the year before, there was a sub-s shortage. You know, as we look at this year, we, you know, pandemic and other things went on, there are obviously concerns about staffing. So, and I bring this up merely for the fact that there may be a point in time where, you know, during this time of year, we start looking at snow days or other things, but we may actually have a staffing day, potentially, where it's a point where we have staff who are out, you know, due to illness, quarantining, you know, various things that, talking with Debbie or Sarah, and we feel that we cannot safely open the schools without compromising the things we have in place, and we may have to go to a, what we'll call a staffing day, in which we can move to a remote learning day, if all possible. And I say if all possible, because if we find out, say, at 5:30 in the morning, 6:00 in the morning, it may be more difficult for us to mobilize that in terms of, you know, Chromebooks, technology. So we may, that staffing day might move to a, just like a snow day for us in between the buildings. So, you know, the staff have been great thus far with letting us know in advance as to when they've been out, you know, absences. So, you know, if we do find out, say, the night before, that we're, you know, Debbie and Sarah call and say, we have a large number of staff members who are out, and there's no way we can safely open the building without compromising the health and safety of everyone in here, then at that time, we can make a call the night before, and they'll potentially mobilize remote learning for the next day. So it will provide a new wrinkle for us this winter. But I do want to say also, when we talk about snow days, in talking with teachers, talking with administrators, we feel that this year, if there is a snow day, we will keep it as a snow day. We will not use it as a remote learning day. Just, I think it's out of fairness, I think it's just, you know, it's very difficult last minute. I know many times we have, you know, we don't get the call or, you know, until 5:00, 5:30 in the morning. I think this year, just out of fairness, the number of days we'll have, you know, last year, I think a handful of days. I think just out of, you know, fairness to families, to students as well as staff, snow days issue will be just no days. Will not be remote learning days. I know that's been discussed, but I just want to clarify that. And I know that when I sent out a short note for the holiday, the Thanksgiving holiday, I would just reiterate that point as well. Like you said, and then, yeah, just the last things about budgets, you know, Debbie and Sarah did a great job. We're with Louis going through budgets, you know, trying to make sure the needs of, you know, to the community as well as the staff and community do great things here, so. We did receive a tuition request, you know, on Friday, and that's something which we are awaiting guidance from both the AOE, which we should have potentially by the end of this week, as well as our lawyers. And so that'd be something that I think is a board we should discuss the next board meeting in terms of what action should be taken with the rest of that, but once we have more information available to us. And as Marcia said, we have conferences coming up next week, and then the end of the first market period is the 6th, and then we do have the Thanksgiving given break. You know, and hopefully, people can find time to relax as best they can. And it's going to be a tough holiday season for everybody, so I just, I mean, the turkeys, I think, are the ones that are relieved, to be honest, so, you know, they might stay on execution, so.
I heard they're hard to come by right now. I don't know. I haven't shot for a while.
My backyard, I guess, are in those.
Yeah, the wild ones, yeah. They're so good. Okay. Any questions for Chris?
I do.
Okay, and you are?
I'm Laney Sinclair.
Okay.
I attended the SU meeting. I'm attending this one. I'm hearing that you guys are listening to what the teachers have to say. Are you taking into account what the parents have brought up to you as well with the remote learning? How are you going to run it? You were talking about being understaffed right now, possibly. Who would run this program, this remote academy that you guys are discussing? How would that work with IEPs? Right now, we're seeing in our classrooms while we're doing it, you guys are talking about separating these children into a different program, but we're seeing within our classrooms right now, children that are joining into the remote program due to sickness. Some of them probably coming back with COVID restrictions. You have people that are traveling that are going to have to go through that. If you take that away, they don't have that option. And then what happens if the school itself goes remote and you already split these children up? What happens at that point? Do you pull them back into the school system, or do you keep them split up? These are concerns that a lot of us parents have. Also, the fact that our children are, right now, this has been a consistent thing. If you decide to change this and make this a remote academy, you're disrupting the children's education right in the middle of the year. They're already dealing with this pandemic. And then on top of it, they would have to be integrated into a brand-new school system. This would be like being in a brand-new school with brand-new teachers, brand-new classmates, and that would have an effect on them. When we, for myself, when my family chose to do the remote learning, we were told that this was going to be consistent within their classroom. If I had known it would have been any other way, I would have homeschooled my children. I had everything ready to go. But I was told this was going to be a consistent thing, and I think this disruption could have a huge impact on the children.
Ross?
Okay. Thanks, Laney. I know you shared your concerns at the GRCSU board meeting as well. And I do think that the concern that you shared have been ones that have been discussed in our community meetings, I think, you know, so they're not to be taken lightly. And like I said, we have not made any decisions in terms of what, you know, second half of the year will look like. And we are aware of the social, the emotional impact that any sort of alteration or change to a schedule have on the students, the staff, and the families. And so that is being taken into careful consideration. You know, but I do want to stress that when we rolled this plan out, we did also, you know, say that remote, the remote learning aspect would be throughout the year, but, you know, revisions we've made, I think, you know, SUs have to look at during this time, that, you know, have to make changes and have to make adjustments if they feel it's necessary. I say if they feel it's necessary, because we may find that after going through this whole process, that that we keep our current learning model, or we may look at, you know, altering that. So, you know, we are going through a process. We are taking the concerns that you have brought up, you addressed into consideration, and like I said, we will have a recommendation, hopefully, in December, that will reflect the interests and the concerns of all parties.
Any more questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Tina.
Has it been discussed, please forgive me if we could say this, but the week or two after we get back from vacation over the holidays, has that been discussed as a possible, everyone is forced remote?
We will not, we will not be due at this time, no.
January?
Yep. Yeah, as of, as of, as of right now, we will be returning, I think, January 6th is the date.
Any other questions for Chris?
I don't necessarily have a question, but I would say that I'm an advocate for the Supervisory Union Academy. I think that in whole, when I talk to my children and thinking about the amount of extra work it's putting on the teachers, I don't think it's an ideal learning situation for the in-person children or the remote learning children. And I know that, you know, I'm not trying to say that any parent who has a remote learner, you know, it's a very valid response to know that your children is going to have to make a change. In my opinion, I think that going to something like an academy would give a great learning experience to in-person, so a teacher can focus on those children. And that the children who would be in those remote academies, yes, they would have new classmates. They could learn to be friends with those classmates. They have a shared situation with those classmates, and then they have a teacher that would be able to focus on a remote learning situation. So, you know, that wasn't really a question, but.
No, but that's fine, your opinion. I mean, and that's why we're still considering, there's pros and cons, believe me, both ways. And no decision has been made yet. And the Supervisory Union is looking at it, our board. But, yeah, no decision has been made yet, because it is not an easy answer to come to.
And I don't want to say that to imply that my children have received anything less than phenomenal teaching this year. I mean, every, you know, none of this is ideal across the board for anything, but, you know, and my kids are in elementary or pre-K, so I can't speak to anything older than that. But, you know, our experience has been phenomenal, but I feel for my children's teachers with everything that they have going on. So as a parent of an in-person learner, I feel like it would be advantageous to my children to have a teacher who can focus on kids that are physically in front of them.
Right. And like I said, we are supervisory union-wide, separate board-wise. We're looking at it. We realize the hardships that the teachers have to go through for preparation and everything else. I don't think we made a decision affirmably yet, but when we first opened school, we said it was going to be Monday, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. The possibility of going five days in school would be looked at, and a decision made down the road. I don't think we have made that decision. But what weighs heavily on it is right now, with the half-day remote learning on Wednesdays, that does free up our teachers to be able, takes some pressure off, and enables them to be able to prepare a little better. So we're looking at every way we can to make it easier on them. We fully understand what's going on. It's, this whole year has been a disaster, but, you know. Get better.
One question I would like to add, though. I mean, if you do this academy right now, your teachers are all, the dedicated teachers are in the classroom. So who are you going to get to do this academy that is, that has the same standards as our school does? If you can't staff that, I don't know how you're going to staff an academy and provide adequate educational services for other Rutland Town school students who are remote.
Right. I mean, and that's why no decision has been made. Like I said, when there's pros and cons to each, there is, some of them are substantial. We should be making that decision within the month.
By December, by the next board meeting, we should have an idea as to where we're going to be moving.
But thank you. And Shawna, the first question was from Katie Grady.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what what Anna said. The original plan obviously was that four-day model, and then really was, when we moved to step three, was to go to five days. And we realized, we quickly realized that if we tried to forward on with that, we would have just, we would have lost a lot, I mean, we would have just burned out a lot of people. People are just burned out, and I think it's one where, you know, we, you know, working with, you know, the staff, we decided we need to keep this current model in place, at least as we work through this, that they need that half-day. And that's why I said it's only fair to provide them a little additional time to work and get things ready to go, because like I said, they've been, they haven't, they're, and I say this, and that's not to ever make light, but as I walk around the buildings, the teachers are doing a phenomenal job. They really are. They're doing a phenomenal job. They're working their tails off. They're exhausted and deeply appreciative, but I also understand that there, that the level of stress, the exhaustion that they're experiencing is there as well, you know, behind that. So it's just, it's, but, so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Okay. Hope principals.
So in our principals' report, we wanted to thank Mrs. Swayze for her successful Red Ribbon Week. We had a number of themes throughout the week. We included social media awareness that was presented in collaboration with our School Resource Officer, Officer Foal, and Mr. Rowe for our health, for our health classes. Our students have completed their math testing and have been assigned to interventionists as needed. Moving into step three, we have allowed now the same grade level to be at the same location during recess when they're outside. And we've also had grades one and four, which are our biggest cohort of kids, able to eat in the cafeteria at the same time. They're facing all the same direction, and they're sitting by class. You see little dots on the seats here.
Those are the yellow dots.
Yellow dots, yeah. So we are able to, the state has allowed us to be at half capacity, about 73 students, but we're starting just with half of that, with 35 students. Remote students, we've got a few more back, so we're now at 45, which is a little over 12% of our student body. As Mr. Sullivan said, we are exploring the PRCSU Virtual Academy, so we're continuing to meet weekly to discuss that. And we have been told, we have been selected to administer the NAAT test for every year we get it. For fourth grade, so they, every year we do. So that will happen this spring.
Now, what is, if I could ask the NAAT test? You know.
National Association of Yeah, National Association of Educational Performance.
Okay, well, the problem is, we have so much testing going on.
We can't say no to that.
Well, okay, when you, when you, they have, we've been selected.
Yep.
I want to know, can we say no?
That's what I say, too. Can I say no? Thank you?
There are four schools in SU that were selected, but.
Four out of seven? Really?
The four schools could get selected every year. I don't.
It's always Rutland Town. Great.
I mean, it's, and it's not that I don't think we'll blow the test out, but we're not here to test students. We're here to educate students. So you know how I am. I'm just so against all these tests, but. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You know, so for our, for our building matters, we're very fortunate to be able to fill our senior position from the band.
So that is working well?
Very serious transition and very, and it's worked perfectly, so.
Okay, you know, I wish you'd told us earlier. Even today, I was out there beating the bush for people, so, awesome.
Sorry.
That's okay.
They brought in a, borrowed a lift from West Rutland last week. The town helped us with that. Thank you to the town for delivering that, and we replaced most of the light bulbs in the gym, so now it's much lighter in there, so then we're ready for basketball. And we were ready for bowling, which was one of the things we did before, watching that. We applied for a grant for a dishwasher and a slicer in the kitchen. That courtyard that's out behind the gym there, that was starting to look like a jungle. All the trees and the brush and things cleared out of there. Some of the bigger trees, not yet, but all the brush and the undergrowth, it looks amazing, so.
Awesome, good.
And then Mike already gave you the brick update, so they ordered the brick in, but Kelly Treya has built a little mini Zamboni.
Oh, really?
To fill with water and moved with our tractor to drag water and distribute water onto the surface. To fill with water and, and moved with our tractor to drag water and distribute water onto the surface, so.
Oh, I can't wait to see that, you brought this.
Yeah, when it gets out there, I'll make some pictures.
Awesome.
Very clever, and we appreciate it.
I, I do just want to add, with Election Day, you know, we did the full-day remote. We really encouraged teachers for a number of reasons to please work from home. Once kids knew that some of us were going to be in the building, I will say middle school in particular would want to be here. They did not want to be remote. They were saying, please, can I just come in? I was like, I didn't expect this. I was begging if they could come in person that day. But the feedback that we did receive was that it went smoothly, so I appreciated the board, you know, giving permission. I appreciate parents being flexible with childcare, et cetera. I think it was a good test run for, for us, and I, really the feedback was it went smoothly. But kids were again happy to be back on Thursday in person, yeah. And just to clarify, our parent-teacher conferences are this Thursday and Friday, so.
Thank you.
You'll be half-day.
This Thursday, Friday, half-day.
Half-day Thursday, Friday.
And Wednesday?
No school.
No school.
They hadn't mentioned it, so it's like, almost like a mini-vacation, no school on Wednesday. And then Thursday, Friday, you're remote, half-day, so.
They're not remote, they're just.
They're still in school, but then make a home early?
They go home at 11:40, 11:45.
Okay, now they get lunch before they go? Grab and go?
Let me know.
Yes.
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yes, we're having breakfast.
That's what the lesson rule.
Okay. Just so, just so the parents out there know that they shouldn't come home hungry, but. Anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Personnel, resignations. There are none. Contract recommendations, you have a separate sheet. Can we come back on, next meeting would be coach, cross-country coach? Or is that something you want to move on now?
No, cross-country's over.
I know, but.
It would be for next year. It would be for next year. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
But just so that Louis knows whether to include an extra 500 or not.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, anything you want to tell me about the contract recommendations, Chris?
No, unless you guys are talking custodians, a custodian position.
Correct.
Okay.
But those are internal, correct?
Those are internal, correct. They were both part-time and they're now both full-time.
And I believe that's still a cost, is it, correct, or no?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone on the board have any questions on the contract recommendations? Okay, just for those out on telephone, support staff would be moving the two part-time custodians to a full-time positions. One is a Susan Perry, the other is Sarah Davis. Extracurricular, there is a contract for Becky Curtis, it's a mentor stipend of 450. Mary Kate Turgeon, eighth-grade girls' basketball coach. Amanda Carmichael is seventh-grade girls' basketball coach. Greg Fuller, eighth-grade boys' basketball coach. And Patrick Whalen, seventh-grade basketball coach. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract as recommended.
Second?
Aye.
Tina? Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome. Vacancies, we don't have any, do we? And there's no non-union, it's fine. Chairs report, I don't have a lot because it's budget time. I do want to just inform the board, unless you want to make a change tonight. The state has come out because of the influx in Vermont. Unfortunately, we're falling under the same category as the other states. There is a huge amount, we had another death in Vermont, so up to 59 for COVID. He has recommended that it be a 10-person gathering. Again, still, it isn't, it's a recommendation only, he's not changed anything as far as mandates. So Chris and I were talking earlier, Tim, as you can tell, we'd actually be over tonight.
The holiday gather really is, it's more, geared more towards holiday gatherings.
Right.
You know, so that's where, you know, typically that is, but I think as we look at, the discussion we had was, you know, is moving forward, is things are, you know, potentially getting, you know, worse, you know, just to be cautious, you know, whether we wanted to continue with in-person or remote, correct?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I know the board would prefer in-person. Communication seems to go better when you can look someone in the face and see the expressions and I don't, and Chris will tell you, I don't like all these Zoom meetings, but we just wanted to put up a heads-up that should, right now, December meeting should be in-person. Should things change, and we think that by meeting in-person, it would put our kiddos at any more danger than we will go to, back to the telephone conferencing. But that's a decision we can make down the road. Your feelings, everybody?
I'm fine with in-person.
Okay, so we'll continue, like I said, December will be, we'll put it out there as in-person unless something state, changes in the state or the mandates. That's about it, as far as what I've got. Policies in your packet? And I think these are all ready for approval tonight.
So the, the first two are for to be adopted. So the board member conflict of interest and the agenda preparation distribution are there to be adopted. We will, definitely a change, it's just that we have, you know, it's been a couple of years since we've reviewed them and adopted them, so.
If I could have a motion to adopt the two of them, it's the board meeting preparation policy code C1 and the board member conflict of interest, which is code B3.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions on these policies? And again, there really is no change, we're just, for everybody's information, we're just going through. And there is a committee made up of S U members, going through all the policies, trying to bring us all up to date. There are a few new ones, but none that, well, none that we did have for approval tonight. We do have, go ahead, Chris.
Well, we have the, this was discussed at the last meeting, about the driver's education that we discussed this, that Wells and Ara have a policy in place for their residents that, you know, if they attend a school that does not offer a driver's education in terms of what the obligation would be. And while we had offered them a spot within our S U, because our S U does offer driver's education at West Rutland, Proctor, and Polley, and we're looking to increase seats for that. The discussion was if we wanted to follow similar policy that Wells and Ara have adopted, which is if, if there are no spots available within our S U, that there would be a compensation for driver's education.
Well, it's, it's a question, and like I said, I've been on the board thirty-some odd years. And I have never had a request to pay for driver's ed because our kids have always gotten it from their high schools. And shame on me, I never thought about the homeschoolers. And I don't know in the past how they handled this, if they paid it out of pocket or. But anybody out there who is attending a private school or is a homeschooler and your school or home does not offer driver's ed, you can contact a Supervisor Union.
Yes.
And they can try to get your student, your child into a program within the district without any out-of-pocket expense. And when this was brought up, we did realize that there are homeschoolers and I've just never received the bill. And should we not be able to put them into one of our sister schools, they can ask for a refund, which would be a reimbursement up to $400. And that's just fair, I mean, it's, it's a lot of work to homeschool and, you know, God bless them.
It's not just homeschooling, though, people that, even if they go to a private school.
Right.
So like, for instance, all our kids that go to Long Trail, I don't think they have a driver's ed there.
Probably not, so they.
So like, my sister went there and my parents paid private.
That's what it says.
$1,000.
Right, and it says in there, what happens is, they contact, the parents should contact the Supervisor Union and we'll try to get you into one of our sister high schools for the driver's ed, and that won't be any expense to you. If we are unable to do that, then we can reimburse up to $400. But in the past, like I said, I have never been asked, I.
I didn't even think about it.
Nope, neither.
Fifteen years ago, or whatever, ten years ago, no response.
No, no, exactly, and like I said, it was one person that just asked and it was like, wait a minute, we don't do this, but yeah. So Louis, did we put anything in our line probably isn't worth it? In our expense line?
There's nothing in the budget right now for this. I think it's not something that we've experienced in the past, it should be pretty immaterial.
Okay, thank you, that's what I thought. Any questions on that?
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
So Chris, is what you're seeing that at the other districts, what you discussed was first seeing if there was a spot in the S U, and then if there was no spot, then allowing for the reimbursement? Or they had a choice either way?
No, I think we first have to provide them with the opportunity within the S U. It's not as if they get to choose the, so if we have an op, we have a spot available, say like there's a Wells resident or a Rutland Town resident, and we have a, we have three spots available, one in Proctor, one in West Rutland, one in Polley, and obviously Polley is a good distance away, but Proctor is close in proximity, that student would have the opportunity here. Now, if the student chooses not to, then there'd be no financial obligation at that particular time because we had provided them with an opportunity. Now, the board could come back and say, out of hardship because of transportation or this and that, but that's, you know, that'd be a board, you know, a case-by-case situation where they could look at this scenario, like in terms of, if the only spot we have available is at Polley, realistically, to get that student from here to Polley is, you know, from a logistical standpoint, might be troublesome. But the board could then make that decision to waive that and then provide them with this 400 stipend.
So if a parent of a Long Trail student from Rutland Town area, the only spot was Polley, they would have, before they could get reimbursed the 400, they would have to go before the board and ask for special permission?
Yes.
But that's not really how this is written here. And then the second thing is on number three, where it says that they will be reimbursed $400. I think it should say reimburse up to $400, because some driver's education training programs are less than 400.
Yeah.
Yep. So, Tina, well, this, this really is a, the first draft, because I think last time we just discussed this. So the language that we bring before you is just the language that Wells has in place. So we are in that first state we were going through, and so what will happen is, we can then go back, make changes to the language, bring it back in December, then at that particular point, we can choose to adopt it or not.
So under number two, when it says offering their school, we can add on about Supervisor Union?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Tina. And how, the other one that we're discussing, we're looking at tonight, it's very lengthy. It's the prevention of sexual harassment, as provided by Title IX. I have read it. This is the same one that the rest of the Supervisor Union has, correct?
Yes. This, this came straight from the VSB, this is their model policy for this, and it's kind of a blend of policy slash procedure because of all the legalities in there, like stuff that we have to take. And so my recommendation was for us to just adopt the VSB model policy that had been vetted by, you know, state's legal team. Most S U's are doing the same thing with this. And this sexual harassment used to be an HHB, but this Title IX kind of pulled us out and it's dressed, and still definitely provides a lot more protection for all parties, but it also provides a very strict process that has to be followed by, by the school.
Now, because of the length of the prevention of sexual harassment, if you have any questions or anything, just get in touch with Chris.
Yeah, and there's not a lot of will or room procedurally, and I think that's what they advise us with. There are a lot of things that can, there could be change, you're adjusted, this is basically, you know. It went into law already, so, you know, here at school, that if there is a case that this is what we have to follow, and we'll be following this, or it's, it's in mid-August.
Any questions on those, they will come back to us for approval in December. And that's on the driver's ed and prevention of sexual harassment policies. Old business, any old business? What do they think of? About new business, class trips, field trips, fundraising, that's kind of on hold for, for the COVID, isn't it? I mean, I really.
We didn't put this on there at all.
So this was, this was asked, we put on at the GRCs meeting because Wells has discussed this, Corey Valley discussed this as well, for uniformity, where Wells and Corey Valley had, you know, had agreed to push off all field trips till March, March 1st of 2021. And what they had asked with regards to fundraising would just be, you know, be mindful of the economic crisis that we're in, and the financial impact it may have on communities. Did that completely rule it out, but it was just asking them to just be mindful of that, that's. I don't, it's more of the high school saying that you weren't having like six, you know, like the classic 2025 was doing a fundraiser when it may not necessarily, you know, they have some time. So it's not such a emergency, but it didn't prevent like boosters from having like wreath sales or pizza sales or things along those lines. And a lot, and a lot of it really was done online, not really door-to-door, so. That's just what the discussion with GRCs and board is asking us to at each of our meetings, just to kind of just.
We haven't really had anything to request for funding at all, so.
I mean, there's, we can't go anywhere.
No, exactly.
We're just field trip, obviously, so. Unfortunately, yeah. Don't need the others to say no, before I saw that about, because I have a seven-day daughter.
Right.
Hopefully next year, we'll turn a field trip. From my eighth, prior eighth, hundred strip fundraising, I know that two years would be a lot easier than one. So I was thinking that, you know, is that something that we could still be doing right now? If it was something that would not, you know, door-to-door or at the school, but if it was something like an order form, that they would come, pick up outside or something?
You don't.
Yeah, I mean, we can think about it, I just, we're not planning on any. I would teach a lot of work in the fundraising, but you don't know what it's going to look like, right?
And, and what happens is it becomes, financially, it becomes a little bit of an issue because you, then you have all this money and we have to give it back. And so what do we do with that, how do we, you know, adequately disperse of that money? I mean, I highly recommend parents of seventh graders, eighth graders, if it doesn't look so good for you, but seventh graders, even if they could maybe do things, jobs, different things for even around home and start putting money aside just in case, that their base, that their trip does go as scheduled when they're eighth graders. But I think, I do not think at this time it's worth us getting involved in handling the money type thing. And Tina, I know exactly what you're talking about, but.
I agree too, you know, trust me, because you've been on the fundraising meetings for a long time, it's just. I hate to have what happened to our eighth graders last year.
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
And other, other districts have, they have a bit of a moratorium on them, it's just like, just being mindful, just being cautious about the fundraising that they, that they do, so. And I know that we, last year, just, you know, talk about monies, but we were able to reimburse families. we were able to reimburse families for the monies that they lost or, but it looked forward to the trip or something else. So it was as if that money went back to the school or, it was unfortunate, but, you know, students are able to receive their money back. So it would be as if we would lose it, but trips, we don't know.
Yeah, unfortunately. Any other discussion on the class trips, field trips, fund, fundraising? Upcoming meeting, our next meeting will be December 14th. We will have our second budget proposal. Um, is, do you guys want to talk to us or you want to talk to us now on the budget?
We can, we can talk to you now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
Oh, I didn't know if you wanted to talk about it in executive session.
Oh, you do need to?
Yeah.
Oh.
Personalities. Personalities, yeah.
Okay, how about anything else as far as your, um, recommendations go as far as the gym, the bleachers?
I think just, we have a, we have a beautiful building, um, and we really need to maintain that. And some of those big items, costly items, when things happen, those are the things to go. Um, and I really would like to start seeing us chip away at maintaining our building. So Mike talked about, um, some of those things, new bleachers. I mean, you, you can take a peek at them, you can watch us pull them in and out. Um, the utilities, Chad, we talked about that for a couple of years. Refinishing the gym floors, we just like, want to take a field trip just to look at it.
Well, that is, that's, the gym floor needs to be done on a regular basis. So it doesn't become, it shouldn't be on a wish list.
Yeah.
It should be on a major list.
Items to consider, I don't think.
And just so you know, this year we saved a lot of money because Kelly Trey had refinished our floor himself.
Mm-hmm.
So this is, um, an example of really taking it down to nothing and repainting it and making it better. So it's still less than the process we've been, that, that's just, it's very yellow now. We really have years and years and years of flacks and, uh, finish put on it, so. Um, and the sound system, sound systems in, figuring out when you put the sound system after high school, that costs over $20,000.
Yeah.
And that's not what we're looking at. We're looking at the sound system that Kelly teaches in other places. Um, and he says it looks great. And we could use it for here, we could use it for education, we could use it for any of that that takes place in that building. And that's, uh, he's been very, he's very high on that, uh, system that they use to hold.
And I think, you know, we know especially this year that, you know, we are frugal and this is a, a very frugal budget, as you can see. But I would like to start seeing some maintenance of the building be put into place, you know, every year. Similar to when you were very supportive with us for technology. I just, I don't, we have a beautiful building and it just needs to be maintained.
Okay, so what are you talking, you two?
That's just, I mean, we, some of those items to consider is what we put. We got to look into our gym. I think, you know, we, we're very fortunate that we have, um, like Friends of Theater now, and we were unfortunately supposed to have one last year and again this year, but we have to rent that sound system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and again, we can use it for a nu, for a number of things. And those are really the things in there. We have a few items, um, you know, some desks and chairs.
Right.
We want to just kind of rotate that through. I will tell you that they don't make things like they used to. So the desks that we have, like Linda Mullins is a prime example. Her desks that she has are 30 plus years old and she took them and sanded them down and spray painted them. They look great this summer. Thank you, Mrs. Mullins. They look beautiful. Um, and they're really nice sturdy desks. Some of the new desks that we buy, they're just cheaply put together, they peel easily, they're kind of flimsy. Um, they have, this stuff is furniture, school furniture is expensive. So we're doing what we can, but there's some things that we just, we need to replace some furniture. But we're trying to do that, like Debbie has like the rotation, similar to like rooms being painted. So we're not asking for all to be done at the same time. We know-
Year by year.
Year by year, just a little bit. So I really wanted to focus on the gym and, you know, the scoreboard would be great out back. I mean, it's the same thing. If it's cold and rainy, I, I have to ask everybody there what's the score and I get a different answer.
Right.
Um, so like you said, we really wanted to be very mindful, especially the state that we're in right now.
Okay.
So that's-
So you're saying number, okay, if you have to prioritize, what would they be? What would be number one?
If you think so, now we're on the spot.
Mm-hmm.
Those four are the love?
Yep.
I would like to ask Kelly for a reason, so.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'd like to ask Kelly for a reason, but I'm happy. She wants to help us put this stuff together.
Mm-hmm. I would say to refinish the gym floor would be close to the top. If not the first, it should be at least the second.
Yes.
So I, I'm just trying to give, so we can kind of give Louis an idea of what to add in. Um, I think the sound system, we could probably live without for a year, um, while it'd be nice.
Yes.
I mean, we may not need it. If we can't have anybody in the school, then we don't need a sound system. Um, and of course you've still got, um, I don't know if we're ready to add huddle on the video camera, but that would be 4,000. So, um-
I think he said 3000.
3,000. Yeah, so that would be 3,000, if, because I think the majority of the board had wanted a year at a time, and really 3,000 a year for two years would be six and they want eight for the, uh-huh.
Yeah.
But, um-
Yeah, he's looking for the 3,000 kind of this year, not next.
Correct, right. And I think it would logistically put a strain on our IT people to try to come up with a camera or give someone a camera to try to, whereas this system is already ready to go and will follow.
That's nice.
Trying to be good to you here, Chris.
I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Um, so board members, what would be yours besides maybe the gym and huddle?
I would prefer to look at that.
Yeah, let us ask, uh, let us ask Kelly.
Okay, because the two of them, I mean, you're looking at, if you did the gym floor and huddle, it's, it's 20. So, I mean, and I appreciate this budget. You have no idea, this is the best budget I've ever gotten, ever. Um, so if you-
Yours across most tuition bills come in with that.
I know. I hear ya. May, may Big Mac go higher, no, Louis, I'm proud in there.
Oh, yeah.
But, um-
Lynn, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Um, I agree that the gym floor should probably be higher up there. I think that, um, safety wise, it can get really slippery at least halfway through the year. I know my kids slipped a lot all over it and I've seen a lot of other kids do the same thing. So I think refinishing it would make it safer. Um, and I'm just, I think, I'm trying to clarify what you were asking, Sarah. Are you asking for maybe a line item on the budget for like future projects? So that you would put maybe like 20,000 a year or something in that budget and that could go towards these types of wishful thinking or, you know, nice maintenance ideas or something like that? Is that what you're looking for that's not there now?
Yeah, I think like what Louis said, you know-
Putting that 25,000 in.
Yeah, and just so be like, if we, like if, when Kelly started surfing the floor on the, this whole thing needs to be refinished. So instead of just, you know, doing that itself, at that point, be like, let's get this down to the bare bones, refine it and get it.
I mean, the floor was so expensive, it's foolish not to keep it maintained. Now, the only problem is, um, even if the proceeds from Cheney Hill automatically go into the capital fund, which is a great place for it to go, don't get me wrong. Um, so we would have quite a substantial amount in there now. But, um, as far as 25,000 goes, if you want to, we would have to have separate articles. The first one would be to ask to transfer 25,000 into a surplus money into the capital fund. Voters have to approve that. We cannot automatically do it. So that would reduce our income down by 25,000. So our cash to open would be down by that much. Um, we can ask them to do that and that will affect the budget, of course. Um, and then on a separate line to ask the townspeople to give the school board the authorization to remove funds and put funds in as needed so that we don't have to go out to the public every time. Because should there be an emergency, we'd have to have a special election to, you know, get the funds out of the capital. And I understand, I know the logistics behind why it was worried the way it was. Um, trust was a lot of it, but I believe the voters now, after all these years, can trust us again. They see that we are very frugal, we don't misuse funds at all. So that would be two separate articles that would have to be added on to the warning. So we just need to make that decision as a board if you want to have Louis reduce our cash to open by 25,000 so that, that other article has that 25, if it gets approved, to go into the capital fund.
I have a question. Lynn, I mean, that's the capital fund and some of these things are capital items, wouldn't you think? Like the, the floor and the bleachers and the sound system, can't you, I don't know how much money, it's never said what was actually in the capital fund.
It's less than 100,000.
Oh, it's less than 100,000?
So, yeah, it's, it's, these are smaller items. I would not feel comfortable asking them to be voted on. Um, right, I mean, if we have a major, something happens.
There's a boiler, okay.
Right, the boilers, the roofs, whatever.
Don't you say that out loud.
I know.
So, yeah, so that's why I'm not mentioning taking it out of the capital fund.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I think with having a meaner budget, it would be easier to ask that question.
Yep.
In my opinion, and I think it would be, um, make our decisions a little bit looser, having that extra in the budget. And I, I like that idea.
And Ralph?
He's already deferred, I think.
So?
Yeah, I mean, I, I really don't feel like I'm in a position to, uh, to scrap any of this right now. I, I don't think removing one or two or all of the use. I'd like to see them all in the budget to, at least to scrutinize the next time around.
Hey, Louis?
To get some feedback.
Yeah, it's usually what we do.
Yeah, we, uh, we don't have to make any decisions tonight on these things. We still have November, we have, um, December's board meeting and then January. I think we'll have more information next month with the tuition expense. We'll also have an idea of what the tax commissioner's recommendation is. Remember, there's a lot of pieces that go into the tax rate. So I think as, as those pieces come together and we have a better sense of what the tax rate is going to look like, we can then decide, do we want to put a little more in or, or not? And, and how we want to phrase those art, separate articles, how much we want to take from the surplus. Um, we, we'll have the tax commissioners let it December 1st. We should have our CLA around December 15th. Um, so I, I think those are two big pieces in the calculation, also equalize pupils. Uh, so if you see, even if with a flat budget or a, a budget that's up 1%, if those other factors don't work in your favor, you could see a steep increase or a steep decrease if they work in your favor. So I think those are on the table for, for items to consider and I, I think let's get everything in that needs to be in. And, and then as we have those other pieces, we can have further discussions and kind of decide based on where those other factors are coming in, what we want to do.
Okay, I was just wondering, I mean, if we did all five of them, adding huddle on for 3,000, um, you're talking about, I don't know, roughly 50,000. I was just wondering what, you know, we don't have to do it now, but at next meeting, what that would mean for our budget increase. And I understand exactly what you're saying about waiting for the numbers to come in. There was one year where we were just probably at about the same point we are with this budget now and the state turned around and it went from like 2% to, um, increase to 11% increase. So we ended up having to chop instead of, um, and that was just absolutely horrible. So I understand completely, Louis, but if we could, if we could just maybe have the numbers when we discuss in December?
Uh, well, I can give it to you now. So about every 80,000 is 1% in education spending. And about, about 85,000 is 1% in expense. So if you're talking about adding 50,000, I mean, you're looking at less than, less than a percent in education spending.
Okay, awesome, just to give us an idea. And then like I said, in December, we'll discuss it more when we have those other figures and, um, we'll keep our fingers crossed until then. Any other questions? I do need a executive session for personnel issues. If I could have a motion. Ralph made a motion. Who has a second? Answered him?
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, executive session for personnel? Any polls? Donna, we'll get back to you.
Oh, I lost my camera here. Okay, thank you, folks. Back to you, Sarah.
Good night.
Good night.